Okay, on to eight discussion items. The first one is eight point one COVID nineteen update for January twenty twenty two.
Again, good evening, everyone, and also community who have just attended the meeting. As you can see, we are in the boardroom in person tonight and will be this way continuing on. So what we wanted to do this evening was just give you an update of where we are since we just came back from winter break. And you all know, you've been reading social media, you've been reading the newspapers, watching television, and hearing about the surge with COVID. And so what we want to do is give you an update of what's happening in the Redwood City School District, and then take any questions, any discussions that you'd like to have. And from that point on, we want to give also some information on some of the vaccine or vaccine clinic that's going to take place. And also additional testing that is going to happen after the President's Week for our students, and also additional COVID testing for not only our students but also our staff after the spring break. So we want to get that information out, so not only that you have it, but our public has it too. So I am going to begin, and then Wendy's going to take on some of the slides also. So we continue to test to keep our students in school. And if you all remember, we are contracting with Bay PLS, and we started this contract with them early fall. And it's one of the state providers that was approved by the CDE. And so we got in really early, and we are one of the districts that is using them. At our school sites, there are two times per week that children can test, and also our staff can test. You just have to sign up, and children are tested. CDPH has provided an update on the winter break with return to school and the Omicron virus in mind. And so we're going to go through that update. And I'm sure that many of you probably, as board members, probably listened to Superintendent McGee, because I think she was addressing board members and county community members in regard to where we are with Omicron virus and the education throughout San Mateo County. Next slide. So you know, we get this question, why aren't you closing schools? Why aren't you closing schools? Well, back in March of twenty twenty, we had no knowledge of COVID nineteen release. We did not have our safety protocols in place. Yes, the initial surge was deadly. Healthcare symptoms were overwhelmed. We had little access to PPE, and no one was vaccinated at that time. So at that time, our local health officer, you know, in March closed schools down, along with the state of California, from Governor Newsom to close. Next slide. What we've learned since March twenty twenty, schools need to be open during the pandemic. And these are the reasons why our students need access to in-person learning. There's a need for that social emotional interaction with peers and caring adults. And we need to have, continue with our meaningful engagement. In the schools, we have safety protocols in place. We have testing in place. We have vaccinated staff and many students who are vaccinated. And there are independent study options for those parents who do not want to send their children to school at this point in time because of the virus. Next slide. And what are we doing to help? Well, we have been in possession of K ninety-five masks for our staff. Staff just need to ask for them. We have now ordered KN ninety-five masks for our students. So we'll have them in place for our students, and hopefully they'll be here within the next week. The County Office of Education has also ordered KN ninety-five masks for our staff. So Eliana gave her the number of staff members we have. And we, I will be asking Martin as soon as I'm given the go-ahead to pick them up. And so we'll pick them up from the county office of Ed. We have open testing. We're sending home test kits for February and spring breaks, and we'll talk about that a little later in another slide that Ms. Kelly will present. We are hosting weekend testing to return to work in school by invitation. And Ms. Kelly will go through that in more depth. What has happened? And you'll see in a slide that is coming. The isolation period has gone from ten days to five days. So if I test positive on Monday, I have to wait five days after that positive test before I can test again. Many times that falls in the week, on a weekend. And parents don't have anywhere to go to get the children tested. Staff doesn't have anywhere to go. So what we're doing is we are going to be offering the test on Sunday. So Wendy will be talking about that in a little bit. Our COVID nineteen director is in place. She's handling a lot of tracking and tracing along with Antonio Perez, and along with his assistant Kathy, and anyone else that we have available to track and trace. We're all working together to manage absenteeism of our employees, whether it be our substitutes, whether it be our staff development people, whether it be outside the classroom teachers who are at the school site, whether it be district office staff who can go into classrooms or even go into the schools and manage principal maybe out. And there are vaccination and booster clinics, and we'll talk about that in a slide that is coming. Next slide. So the vaccination event. This is for, there are seven within San Mateo, seven locations within San Mateo County. Hoover School happens to be one of them. And Hoover School's events is on January twentieth. And you see the hours there from two thirty to seven. And then January twenty-first, from two thirty to seven. And then January twenty-second, from nine AM to four PM. So that is all in place within our own community. That does not mean that you can't go to the other six. If you go to the, the link here, it'll tell you where the other six are in San Mateo County. And I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's three other school districts that are participating. So this is in place, and there are going to be boosters. So for our students or your children who are twelve and above can go and get their booster at one of these times and dates. All right, very thrilled about that because, like I said, there, I think total there are four school districts among the twenty-three that are doing this. I was really happy that got the information in ahead of time, and we were selected. So really, really a plus for us. Next slide. And then I'm going to turn this portion of the updated CDPH guidelines for students and staff as of January sixth. And then today, we just got a new revision on the San Mateo County Office of Education Pandemic Recovery Framework. It came in at about five o'clock. So some things, I think we're up to date, Wendy, I think we're up to date. I think we'll be okay.
Okay, thank you so much, great seeing everybody in person. And I'm pleased tonight to present to all of you. And on behalf of the staff in the Redwood City School District, Dr. Baker had mentioned Dr. Shanna Laney, our COVID nineteen director, who has just been really on top of things. But in all honesty, over since we've returned from winter break, it's really created much more of a village to help support this process. So it's been a little stressful on our students and our staff, I'm sure, with families and so forth coming back. But I'm pleased that we had a strong system in place before winter break and the communication tools and the communication processes so that we could come back to this type of situation and drawing upon other trained staff, including some site support staff, site administrators, et cetera, to help us with proper communication. So the name of the game has been flexibility all along, and this time is no different. We do have some changes, and I just wanted to start tonight by speaking about definitions. So as we go and move forward and you hear about things, the CDPH and now our framework, which I have to say, we have to update perhaps for next time too, if there are any changes, really divides students and staff and their situations into isolation or quarantine. So isolation really affects those and are described as those that have tested positive. Quarantine are for situations in which students have been exposed. So over the next few slides, I want to talk about what the pathways are because it does matter with absenteeism and making sure that students have assignments, classrooms are covered, and other positions in the district are covered accordingly. So for employees, we really follow the Cal OSHA guidelines, which are now streamlined with California Department of Health. And same with students, we follow the California Department of Public Health, which ties into the San Mateo County framework. So the next slide here really describes what has to happen for a student or a staff member, regardless of their vaccination status, when they have tested positive. So you may have actually now, based on the numbers we hear in the news, have heard of somebody tested positive or no somebody. They do need to stay home for five days, our staff and our students. And day, the day of testing or a symptomatic day is really day zero. So we track accordingly. And as Dr. Baker mentioned, we want people to come back as soon as they actually can come back. And so we want to ask them a series of questions. Dr. Laney does this and wants to know whether or not they have symptoms or if their symptoms are improving. And if so, we can then give them a rapid antigen test. So as Dr. Baker mentioned, if somebody tests positive on Monday, then Saturday would be their day five. And we've set up a series of testing opportunities by invitation only so that employees and students, starting with this coming weekend, can be tested. So will not be open to the general public in terms of our students and staff, but for just invitation only. So assuming that all of that occurs, we do want students back and continue to wear masks and so forth. If a student does not, or staff member does not test negative after day five, then they still need to continue isolation and can come back after day ten. So it could be a longer trajectory for that absence. So as I mentioned earlier regarding returning to work in school, after the criteria has been met, we are making sure that people are trying to return. And I have to say, last Sunday, we met with staff on those that were identified to come back. We did a little trial with staff, and we were able to get quite a few staff members back, which helps then divert our substitute teachers and helps with allocation of resources. So these identified dates here are the dates that we are testing by invitation only. So I want to switch gears about quarantine. We probably have more people who have communications about quarantine because they've been a close contact. So when somebody tests positive, there's sort of a clear pathway for them. But if somebody is exposed, it depends on their status essentially, and whether or not they were wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. So if you'd like to dig a little bit deeper in this, the CDPH has lots of scenarios to look at. But I just gave this one example about, because we assume at school everyone's wearing a mask at the appropriate times. Outdoors is still eligible, but people do eat sometimes together and so forth. But most of the time they're masked. And so therefore, they can continue a modified quarantine at school, meaning attending school and so forth, unless they are symptomatic, et cetera. So that's once again, an effort to keep kids and staff in school that may technically be exposed. All right. In accordance to our regular school schedule, we have holidays, weekends, et cetera. And you may have heard in the news, other districts that deployed their home kits, their home test kits over winter break, which was a choice for us. But the way our schedule worked out, we did have January third as an available testing date, which we took full advantage of with our Bay PLS team. So we chose to hold our, our test kits for the February break. So that's what we decided to do, and this chart outlines what our plans will be. So we have here the Martin Luther King Weekend, which is coming up this weekend. We are not deploying tests. However, we have our regular testing schedule in place, starting on Tuesday. And we will be testing on Monday, a holiday, those whose five days end over the weekend. So then we can arrange subs and so forth, or return subs to other classrooms. The February break and the spring break will allow for families to actually test during the week. Our Bay PLS team does not have off, so they will still be working at their regular schedule. And we have them available. There's two teams that will be able to test students, and we are giving out home tests for students to take home and utilize over the break, preferably one at the end of the break. We'll have a direction sheet. And then, once again, we will still have that testing opportunity for identified positive cases at the end of the president's break. And the same thing will occur for spring break. We will actually deploy one based on the inventory we have now, per student, per staff member, to administer on Sunday. And then, once again, we have our Bay PLS team that's working the entire week. So it's another testing option.
Wendy, there's, and the other piece is that I know the county office of Ed has our numbers, and they're trying to see if we can get additional tests. So if we get additional tests prior to spring break, it may be two as opposed to one. And then the parents have the directions to upload their results up to CDPH, if I'm not mistaken. So that's, that's really good, too. And so they wouldn't have to wait in the long lines because I heard for that Monday on that, the second, I guess it was? Yeah, because, no, the Monday, the third, that there were long lines. And, and, and what, at one point, at one point, you know, they, they stopped. And so some people didn't get tested, and I heard about this. And so we need to, we need to come up with a better system. And so this will help us. This will help us if everyone has access to an at-home test, read the directions, and then upload the information that is given to you using the QR card. So that'll be a big plus. The, the other plus that we have with us is also that we have a PLS, which is going to be here during that week when we're, when, when their school is not in existence, but they're still keeping their, the regular schedule. So if parents want to bring their child, they're, they're, they can do that. And then the other piece is the Sunday, which is something that, you know, really is going to help families, especially during this time when, I guess, kids are still not readily available. They can come and get tested so their child can get back to school on Monday if that, you know, that I call it day six, you know, is over weekend.
So I am really thankful that we have the Bay PLS team, especially as you may have heard, it was very difficult over the last two weeks or what have you to find rapid antigen testing labs out in the community in which you could have an appointment or walk up, because I think they were overtaxed. So I'm pleased that we have an ongoing order form that comes in that accommodates our staff and our students and has been for the last month since October. So we will definitely be utilizing them in a great way over these next few weeks and breaks, of course, and ongoing through June. All right, I will stop sharing at this point. We'll continue.
Does anyone have any clarifying questions, Janet?
So first, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Baker for getting in the queue so early with the Bay PLS and making sure that our district had access to that, because I know a lot of districts don't. My only question was on the at-home tests that are going home. Are teachers handing those out to the students to bring home, or are parents going to have to pick them up?
So that's a discussion that we have to have, and that's because there are some difference of opinions when you talk to the people at the county office and county health. So if that's the case, what we will do, if the case is that we need to make sure an adult comes and picks up the test, I'm going to ask for volunteers, parent volunteers at each school site that can give them out, so it will not tax the office staff, it will not tax the principal, vice principal. And there have been some emails from parents that they've already sent me saying they're willing to volunteer in any manner if they, if we need it. For example, for that Sunday, which was the second, and I was giving out these in-home tests. We gave out one thousand five hundred and thirty, myself and Dr. Laney gave, was with me, and so was Jim Nichols, one of Wendy's assistants. And it was really interesting because some of the other neighboring school districts, well, of course, the private schools and the charter schools and the high school district was not doing this. And so they were trying to get the tests from us, and I said, no. It's the Redwood City Elementary School District. And how they got the notice, especially the private schools and, and the charter schools, I don't know, because the notice went out only to our parents. And I can understand our parents having a child in the high school and also in the elementary school. And I said, well, you, there's two, there's two tests in here. So if you have two children, they can each take one, in the high school and be in the elementary. But I was very grateful that we had them because people were telling me as they were walking up, we can't find these anywhere, even our staff. We had a lot of our staff members come on that Sunday to pick them up. So there are additionals have been ordered by the county, and we're just wait till they tell us, come pick them up. As Martin went and picked up all those that we have right now, they're in Wendy's office in the conference room. It was a pallet, and Nancy McGee, Superintendent McGee said, when can you come get your pallet? Because I didn't need it for the December, but I need it for future. And I said, when can I do it? And I'm just really glad that all staff have pitched in and really helped, you know, to make this really work, including, you know, our classified staff, our teaching staff, our principals. They've all just, you know, got on board and said, what do we need to do to make that work and not to close schools? So.
Lisa?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I mean, really amazing work to all of our staff. It's, it's just mind-blowing. I did want to just mention today, we did have that county call with County Superintendent Nancy McGee. I think Mike and I were on the call. I don't know if anyone else had the opportunity to be there. So just as a quick update, and then actually, so, so we got a lot of information from our county and heard from some of the school board members in our county. And then I also just wanted to say, as the CSBA Region Five Director, I've been in contact with people up and down the state. And although it's not perfect in our district, it's not perfect anywhere right now in the United States and in the world. I will say, I'm very proud of the work that our district has done, particularly if you talk to some other school districts. There's other school districts that they don't even have the capacity to do any testing right now. So, you know, people are having to do it, staff and students are having to do it outside of their own school district. We have some school districts right now who are not doing tracing and tracking because they just don't have the staff capacity to do it. We have a neighboring school district that has a resolution tomorrow on their agenda. I don't know if any of you saw that Sequoia Union High School District has a very strong resolution that will be going out to the governor and the state legislature, basically saying, you are asking school districts right now to be public health agencies. We are not public health agencies. We have a job to do to educate kids, and now we're having to, I mean, we just heard, we're basically having to do all this public health stuff. So I, I think that there's, in the next couple of weeks, there's going to be a lot more advocacy to the state that we need additional support. So hopefully that'll help us, additional tests, maybe some additional money to help pay for this extra staffing that we have. But I just want to say, you know, to our school district, I'm very, very proud and appreciative of all your work. I think we've been able to stay in person because of all the work you've done to make sure that classes have staff and all of that. We have some neighboring districts that are struggling having staff in the classroom. So anyway, I just want to say thank you. And I don't know, Mike, if you had anything to add, but it was a really interesting call today, kind of eye-opening.
Yeah, you covered it well. The, there were other districts too that are also just unable to do, they just had to suspend contact tracing as well. It sounded like there's going to be additional guidelines coming soon on what contact tracing is supposed to be. But I think that what we're doing here is really at the forefront of what other districts are doing. And so it was really good to hear that. And Superintendent McGee also covered much of the same things that you covered tonight, Dr. Baker, around, you know, why schools are open. And I just want to reiterate that, that I really think that that is just critical. We'd said it last year, we'd heard it last year, it was schools should be the last place to close and the first place to open. And I see that ethic throughout San Mateo County, but particularly here in Redwood City, so I'm glad for that.
I'll say that again. I really want to just put, just stress that it has not been easy these last ten days. And I know that there is hope on the other side of the next few weeks. But between the middle school teachers covering on their prep time, from TOSSAs, from people just assisting in so many regards, the principals and assistant principals, my goodness, they all get a halo. They just have really pitched in in so many ways, and a lot, a lot of hardworking staff. One thing I love about being a twenty-year-old veteran, a twenty-year veteran, I should say, in our district is this idea of a village and really helping out each other, and especially time of need, but also to work together to make things happen. And it is so evident to see over these last ten days. So thanks to everyone on that. Sorry to interrupt you, Mike.
Ellie, I think we have some speakers.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, for the vaccine events that we have coming up, are we offering boosters?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Okay, our first speaker is Pam Barash.
There she is.
I'm not that hard to find, but I'm glad you found me. Happy New Year, can you all hear me?
Of course.
If you can hear me, give me a wave in the board picture. There you are. Happy New Year, thanks for giving me a chance to speak. I would really like to talk to you tonight, first of all, about how happy I am to see all of those slides and how much we are doing. But specifically, I'd like to talk about the masks. So at the end of winter break, I went on to the PPE Googled form that, for those of you who are not familiar, staff has had access to since the beginning of the pandemic to request supplies. And I went to request N ninety-five masks because of Omicron and what's going on in the world. And my surprise at the end of winter break was that it was only for those who were unvaccinated. So I emailed Dr. Leahy and said, hey, in light of this, could that be changed? And she said, yes, I'll get back to you at the beginning of the last week. And last week I was told, yes, the form was changed and we could get N ninety-five masks. So I requested N ninety-five masks, and the next day I had a bag of painters' masks in my room, not N ninety-five masks. Okay, so I went out and I bought with my own personal money, my own set of N ninety-five masks, a bag, a box of thirty of them for my husband and I to share. And this week I went ahead and ordered on the Google Doc more N ninety-five masks for this week. And today, yesterday, excuse me, I have my days messed up. I had a single N ninety-five mask in a Ziploc bag on my desk, and I was told that that was for the week. Now, I went home and looked at the box of N ninety-five masks that I bought myself that were the same mask that was on my desk, that very clearly say in bold print, "Single use only, please dispose of after use." There are many school districts in the Bay Area and in California that are giving their teachers a KN ninety-five mask for every day of the week through the end of the school year. So my request would be that, especially in kindergarten where we talk all day long, then we breathe, and we have our germs from our own mouths coming out, that we could make every effort to give the staff five KN ninety-five masks a week through, at least through the end of this surge, if not for the rest of the year, so that we could feel as safe as possible, and it does not have to come out of teachers' budgets and pockets to pay for them. Thank you for letting me speak.
Oh, that is going to take place with the, with the supplies that we're getting from the county. Oh, that is going to take place with the, with the supplies that we're getting from the county. So hopefully the supplies will be here soon, and we can start with what we have right now and go in that direction.
So John, is it that we, I think there's the N95 and then there's the KN95.
The N95 is really hard to find at this point in time, because it's on back order, and they're going first to the medical community. But the KN, like what we're wearing, what we have on, those we can order.
And, and the KN95 are supposed to be adequate, right, for Omicron? So, so is it just that, so Pam, I just want to say, I'm really sorry to hear that, that you haven't gotten the mask that you need. Thank you for sharing that with us. But is it just that we didn't have, we just didn't have the supply? And could you speak to why we didn't have the supply?
Well, supplies, when we first did this, we, we got the surgical mask, you know, for, for everyone. And then, you know, supplies have been coming plentiful more and more each day, with the exception of the N95, which is for the medical community. So there could have been a breakdown in our communication at that point in time with, with maintenance. And so, but we can make sure that they get five. And then it's up to them to, if they lose one, then, you know, we'll, we'll definitely look at each circumstance individually.
Great, because I, I do agree that we need to make sure our staff has the, you know, the mask that worked for Omicron. Yeah, for sure. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Ayla Spinelli Stansel.
Hi, I am calling to find out about the way to clear volunteers through the school district a little faster, so that we can have tutors help children in need faster, too. That's it.
So can I ask you a question? Which volunteer group are you with?
I am, I, I, this is me talking, because I volunteer for Healthy Cities.
Okay, we are working closely with Healthy Cities.
Right. And, and, and I've been like struggling, I've got tutors ready to work, but, and children ready to be with those tutors, but we can't get them cleared fast enough to, to be able to, to hop on the bandwagon.
Okay. And then the other thing that was just, just came out from the county is that all our volunteers need to be boosted. So that's another thing that we're going to be asking the volunteers that just came out also.
Right.
So, and I'm sure most of you are, because when I was here on that Sunday giving out home tests, several came to get a home test and they were boosted.
Right.
So Wendy, do you want to take that?
Hi, good evening. I, I do know that Jennifer Nichols has been in contact with JR Bay at Healthy Cities over the last week in order to receive the booster test, the booster documentation. So if you don't mind circling back with JR, that would be helpful. And then I will also circle back in my department.
Okay. Another question is, if, if there's an, I mean, I'm willing to volunteer and help with Jennifer if she needs extra help to look through this. I am more than happy to help out there also. So just reach out, and I'm available.
Will you, we will definitely take you up on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Perfect.
Our next speaker is Yolanda Lamas. Lamas, double L, A, M, A, S. Okay, our next speaker is Rebecca Fouch, F-O-U-T-C-H.
So what, what does that mean? She can't speak? Oh, it's not compatible, the Zoom. So can you bump her to a panelist so she can speak that way?
Yeah.
Okay, do that, please. All right, there you are, Becky. Unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a panelist. Hi, sorry, I don't know what I'm on that isn't working. Thanks, everyone. I'm just going to read what I wrote on my card. Thank you. I'm flabbergasted by the amount of extra work that is being asked of our school staff. So thanks to everyone. I had a specific question about, like, COVID kids returning. So what if a student's day five falls on a Monday? Will the district reach out to the family to test the student before the following Sunday? Or will the district accept a negative home test kit result after five days for a positive student to return to school? Or is the school required to administer testing for students to come back after being positive with COVID?
Very good question. And the guidelines will maybe change, but let's tell her what we have right now.
So should a child be a close contact or be positive and need to test after day five, and that date lands on a Monday? And assuming that's a weekday, then we do have our Bay PLS team, we call it the mobile group, that is sent to a site where we've had a larger group, or we have our schedule regularly in place, number one. But the communication that will happen will be through the letter that is sent home. And then that states that testing does need to occur after the day five. So, and that can be done in various forms, not just through our own district, but that, that is a possibility. And, and then we have to make a determination whether it's negative, and then, or if it's not negative, what the next pathway is as well.
Okay, so if I were to test my child at home with a home kit and show you that result, would that be acceptable?
So before 5:00 PM today, and I have not been able, I haven't had a moment to look at the new framework, there might be a change.
I don't think so, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet.
It's in the works, it's in the works, because many families are in the same predicament, and so that's why we're having this Sunday testing. So I did not see it in the new pandemic framework when I was going through it before this meeting. So, but it's in the works where you would utilize a home test, especially one that you can upload the results to CDPH. And then we could look at them in that manner, too. But right now, no, has to come through either ourselves or you go through another testing service that's in the community.
Right, because it has to be supervised by somebody other than yourself, by somebody who's been trained, is what it says right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks all so much.
That's the end of speakers cards.
Okay, so do we have any additional comments or questions for John on the topic?
No questions, but again, the same as Mike and everybody has said, I do, and I am very grateful for everything you guys have done. You know, again, on top of everything, and as a parent myself, too, I appreciate it. So it is very, it gives me a peace of mind to know that we are taking care of our students. So again, I really appreciate what everybody does. Thank you.
And I do have a question. The mask for the students, is Nancy getting those?
Actually, we are the ones that are purchasing those right now. We, as superintendents, asked her, and so she's looking into that. We asked for the, for our staffs, and she came through with that. And so now we've asked her for the student ones, but we have ordered student ones.
As I was listening to Wendy's explanation, you know, that's one of the issues about definitions that's very confusing to people. So I know that Jorge is very good at making those nice little graphics. So maybe he can make a little roadmap where the student goes, and that might help with some of the confusion, until it changes again.
Yeah, he and, and Shanna right now are working on the communication, the notification that goes home, because that did change on how, what the wording should be. So he and Shanna are working on it tonight. So that's what he said, he was going home to do that, but he was going to listen to the board meeting at the same time, in case something came up.
And I just as well want to say thank you to all of you for all your hard work. I know that it's the little engine that could, you know, it's like every time you're almost at the top and those things changes, and here we go, but then it goes right on back. So I know it's been tough on everybody, but I do appreciate it. I know that Dr. Baker has reached out to all his contacts and has really put our district out there in front of all the others so that our students and our staff could be safer and get the equipment and testing and shots that they need.
And I want to thank, you know, the parents in the community, because they send us emails, and it gives us ideas of what we need to go ask for. And it turned around, and then in the turnaround, we get it. So, so it's been very helpful.
Just one more thing that we heard on the county call today, and they put it in the chat, and I would imagine, maybe you guys got it by the end of the day. The county has produced, I think, some pretty useful information on appropriate masks for the time right now. You know, how to double map, yeah, and so it's in Spanish and English, so hopefully we can get that out to everybody.
On Friday blurbs.
Oh, oh, you already had it in there. Oh, okay, or it'll go out this Friday. Perfect.
This Friday.
Okay, thanks. I thought that would, because I know there is a lot of questions on masking as well.
That'll go out on Friday, and then, you know, we try to put a communicate, it's not really the superintendent's newsletter, it's just a communicate about what's happening and what parents need to be aware of. The next piece, as you know, we had a parent that emailed us in regard to vaccination confirmation. And so that did stop for a bit, but now we're going back to it. And so Jorge and Michelle are getting that information, so it can start getting out to parents and getting back to us, so we can start updating our records. Oh, what, Jorge just texted me, it went out already. I don't, something went out. I don't know, something went out. Oh, the mask guidelines, they went out, they went out already. Okay.
Thank you, Jorge.
Yeah, and it's going to be this way for the next few weeks.
Yeah.
That, that was the one other thing that Nancy did talk about, is that we're looking at a ski slope. So hopefully the next few weeks will be really fast and furious with lots of positive cases, but it should die out. I mean, that's what the experts are hoping, saying, we'll see.
You know, I looked at the county dashboard today, and there was a huge spike, and then the last five days, it's been much lower.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that we're not seeing another spike after that, because it dropped a lot on daily cases.
I haven't seen it, I didn't look at it.
Yeah.
Um, just a thought, since we're talking about COVID and communications, do we have an idea if most of our parents, if not all of our parents, are actually getting our emails? I know that we get texts, right? So, but those that don't have a text, do they get an email? Do we get a confirmation? I know Jorge and Michelle are really good, whoever updates Facebook, and so there's that communication. But we, do we know if, obviously, maybe not everybody has Facebook, but do we know if we're actually communicating? We are communicating, but if the parents are actually receiving that communication, do we have some sort of, I don't know, I don't want to say a survey, but I, I would just like to know.
Knowing, you know, there's a comeback that we can, you know, we can look, you know.
Because I think it's very important for everybody to be informed. I know at one point, maybe people think we get too many texts, too many emails. Right now, I think it would be best to have more than less. So again, it's just a thought, and I do appreciate everything the communications department, you know, that, everything they do. But again, it's just a thought.
So let me check with him and get back to you on that.
Well, I'll add too, that there are parents who have decided they get too much information and they opt out of it.
Yeah.
So then they're not getting anything.
Yeah.
You know. I mean, if they're going to choose to opt out of really important information.
Right.
But I, I will check, I will check, and get back to you on that one.
Anything else on this item? No, again, thank you, everybody, and John, especially to you. I am always very happy to see that you are out there in the frontline, side by side with the workers. As a worker, be myself, I, I know that that really means a lot to people. So thank you for doing that.